Good evening, bonsoir. Bienvenue à la réunion plenaire du 9 juin. Welcome to the committee of the whole on June the ninth. Ms. Parker, do we have any declaration of conflict of interest?
No conflict of interest declared.
Okay, so we have a presentation from Reed, New Brunswick by Mr. Richard Singer. Good evening, Mr. Singer.
Hello, thank you for letting me do this. If you remember from the last time I was here, I usually memorize my presentations, but age says that's over. And when I mentioned the teleprompter, nobody could stop laughing for 10 minutes. So I'm gonna read what I have. Thank you for the opportunity to talk about my passion and hopefully it will become yours as well. Reed, New Brunswick was formerly low back literacy and has been helping adults for many, many years. Fifty-three percent of our adult population in New Brunswick is functionally illiterate. And this, every time I say this, it blows my mind. If you can't read, you cannot do everyday things like filling out a job application or any other form. It is even difficult to shop as items change shelves and labels get updated. Two examples that changed my perspective. Number one, a number of years ago, I had lost my sight for about six months. And number two, we were in Europe one year and we went into a very nice department store and I wanted to buy a shirt. And I couldn't find anybody to help me that spoke the language and I couldn't read anything about the shirt. I couldn't even figure the price. So if you live your whole life with that kind of frustration, then you definitely understand what you're missing. Reed, New Brunswick is a nonprofit charitable organization that trains its volunteers to help improve people's basic reading, writing, and math skills. Our tutoring lessons are free, confidential, and one-on-one. There is no adult age limit and no age limit to learning. An example of this is a recently retired gentleman who came to us with a bucket list. His list consisted of learning to read and write in his work life. He was very successful. He traveled the world as an expert mining drill master. We find that the reason most people are hesitant to ask for help is because they are either too embarrassed or do not want any of their friends or acquaintances to know that they can't read. I had a friend, I have a friend that we've been friends many years. It took me three years to discover he couldn't read till he trusted me enough to tell me. I am reminded of the story of a very nice middle-aged lady who grew up in poverty and did not have the chance to go to school until she was a little older. At that point, she felt out of place and left school to go to work. Eventually, she got married and had children. Her reason for coming to us was so that she could help her children with their homework and go to a PTA meeting because she was always afraid that she might have to read something. Literacy is more than just reading, writing. It also includes communication. We had a very skilled person, it was happened to be mine, who could not get a job because he could not get past the first interview. We, I worked with him for a while. When he finally got up his nerve to go on another interview, he was hired on the spot. And when he phoned to tell me that, without our help, he would still be unemployed and the excitement in his voice, I can't duplicate. To this day, he still phones to thank me for helping to change his life. Since a large percentage of our population can't read, everyone knows someone who requires help. The problem is that unless you watch for it, you probably will not even be aware of it. If you could lead them to the help they need without embarrassing them or making them feel that you're putting them down, you will completely change their life and they will thank you forever. Now, I will give you some benefits of being a tutor because we need tutors. Tutoring actually fights the effects of stress and anxiety because of the social aspect. Volunteering also combats depression and helps you develop a solid support system. By measuring brain activity, researchers have found volunteering makes you happy because you are doing something that you enjoy. As your student begins to learn and become self-confident, so does your self-confidence increase. When I help out at the food bank or with other projects, I feel grateful that I could give rather than have to receive. But I know that what I am doing is only a temporary stopgap for the people I am helping. When I teach people literacy, I am actually changing a life. I know because all my learners tell me so and thank me often. We have a few that have moved away and they still phone me about once every month or two to say thank you and let me know how they're doing and what's happening. Again, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today and hope I gave you something to think about and maybe act upon. The reward of tutoring is something that money can't buy. I guarantee the feeling you get when you change someone's life for the better cannot be described. And tutoring, by the way, if you're a busy person, maybe an hour a week, two hours a week if you feel like it. We give complete training, which you do on your own time, online, and we supply all the materials. So that's basically what I wanted to say. And if you have any questions, please ask me.
Well, thank you once again. So if someone is interested in wanting to tutor, who would they reach out to?
We have some material that we brought and it's got a phone number. And what would happen is you would phone, you would get through eventually to Loretta and she would assess to see what level that person is at and who best, what tutor would be best for that person.
Do I have a question from Councilor Burnett?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Thanks for your presentation, very interesting. It has sort of hit home the other night that we were out with some couples for a gathering on Friday. And one couple has sort of adopted some immigrants that have come in, an immigrant mother, and she has five children. And she can't read or write. And they thought that within the first year, she might get some help with that so she can get a job. She's only in her 30s, but nothing happened. And now she's in her second year and still can't read or write and can't get a job. So do you help immigrants out too as well?
A great part of what we do, not all, we help anybody, but we get a lot of people from the multicultural center. I'm in the process of teaching now a very nice girl that came from Ecuador and didn't speak a word of English. And I wasn't quite sure how I was going to do this, but it's about, what, four, five months now? And you can actually hold a conversation with her and she can go shopping. So yes, we do do it and by all means, we'll give you the phone number, send her to us.
I will take it to this couple because they were disappointed that within two years, she hasn't given the help she needs. And her children are all enrolled in school and doing very well.
And if I can interrupt, what I find with people who don't speak a word of English, but the children come and they learn because in school. I've tried to get the children to help the parents, but it doesn't work because they laugh at the parents because they don't speak the language.
Anyway, I'll get that number. Thank you very much. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
My pleasure.
You're welcome. The reality is, and I know who you're speaking about, we've received a lot of refugee families, young mothers with children by themselves that their husbands been killed. And in their culture, the wife did not go to school or was not allowed to go to school. And the reality is, and I've shared this before, we have young girls that are in grade eight and grade nine in the French school that don't know how to read and write because they were never allowed to go to school as well. So, you know, that these programs like Read and Be to be able to help these young ones because it's not just the parents, it's some of the older young girls that did not have that opportunity, especially now that, you know, depending how long they lived in a refugee camp as well.
Yes, I have a student that I'm teaching at the moment. He's 17 years old. He reads perfect. So I thought, oh, this is going to be easy, until I found out he couldn't understand a word of really what he was reading. So it wasn't so perfect, but we tried.
Yeah, well, thank you for all you do and the volunteer work that you do. And if anybody's interested, they can reach out.
Please, and we'll give you the material.
Okay, we'll have it here at City Hall because we see you quite often.
Okay, I'll pick it up when I see you on Wednesday.
Perfect, okay. Thank you. Grant requests, grant committee recommendation, Ms. Parker?
So we had two requests come in since the last time we've had a committee of the whole meeting. And I sent an email out to the grant committee where they did give their recommendation. So the first one we had was Je de la Cadeau. The recommendation from the committee was $1,000 and this is to help support the event of the city that's hosting it. And the second request was the ATV club. The recommendation was $500. And that was to support rebuilding of the burn shelter that happened a few months ago.
Okay. Je de la Cadeau, we do that every year. So whoever's hosting, we give $1,000. So last year it was, and was it Booktush last year that I had went because we had applied? So every municipality as it moves forward, it's $1,000 that is given. So every municipality gives $1,000 and most municipalities approves that 1,000. That's what the 1,000 is for. The other one, I'll leave it on the floor, but any feedback, recommendations, suggestions from the floor? Councilor Anderson?
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm still questioning where all the money went to Je de la Cadeau that we gave throughout COVID when they did not have games. I know, girl, it's not your fault.
Yeah.
So that, so I have an issue with it simply because we did give, I want to say it was $3,000 a year and games didn't happen. So where did that money go? So I question that. For the VTT, the reason, I have an issue with this request simply because a few weeks ago, the VTT Association came to council wanting to take over one of our trails and talked about the amount of money that needed to be put into a trail. And they wanted to take it over and the city of Bathurst wouldn't have to pay a cent that they had the money to cover it. So then now why do they need money to rebuild the shelter? Is my question. So those are my points.
Any other feedback? Councilor Hondas?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just wondering why we're still entertaining grants at this time of year. I think there's dates that we have. I think they're well way past them. So why are we still getting grants? Why aren't these people telling them, unfortunately, you missed the date, you'd have to reapply next year? I'm, you know, we do have that in the Grants Committee, that there are certain, two times a year where we accept grants. So I'm just wondering why we're still entertaining grants at this time of year.
I think it, because we have, if you want to answer, Amylin?
I don't want to be answering for departments.
Thank you.
It is in the policy, but unfortunately with the way we do receive the grants, it, there's no way of doing it that way. Because a request will come in and, I mean, like Curling Club, for example. If I would have said, you know, sorry, can't help you, come back next year. Like in that sense, we, it doesn't work. The Grants Committee is receiving them as they come in and if they don't want to give the money, that's on them. But I, as clerk, I bring it to them and they bring it to council.
But we will be bringing up the community support policy after this?
Yeah.
So this will, we'll be talking, actually kind of brings to where we want to go with the grants and every other funding. Councilor Hondas?
Yeah, well, in that case, and I know that the Je de la Cadeau, I think we did it in the past, I'd support that, but the VTT, I think unfortunately I wouldn't support that.
Any other feedback? So I will have to go individually just to get. Councilor Willett?
Yes.
Yes for?
The, for the donation.
For both?
Yes.
Okay. Councilor Burnett?
Yes for both.
Yes for both. Councilor LeBlanc?
Yes for both.
Yes for both. Councilor Branch?
Since the Je de la Cadeau is something that all the municipalities do every year and everybody will be contributing when we get it, obviously I'm yes for that. And I agree with Councilor Anderson about the ATV club. If they have money, you know, if they would have had money to take over one of our trails, they should have money to rebuild their shelter.
Okay. So, Mark, and then, Councilor Scarry?
Well, I'm on the Grants Committee and we had voted, we had voted for both of them. I know that the, the request for the shelter was actually more than, than what we approved. And we figure that as, you know, to support it being that it's for tourism and that kind of thing, it brings some money and that there would be a nominal kind of donation to the tune of 500. They do have, you know, a good amount of money in their, in their coffers for sure, but we just figured it'd be something to support. So I'd be in favor of both, yes.
Councilor Legacy?
I support the recommendation of the Grants Committee, yes to both.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Knowles?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I will support both.
Okay. Councilor Hondas?
Yes, Je de la Cadeau, no to the VTT.
Okay. Oh, I'm going back too. So I, Councilor Anderson, nope. Councilor Anderson, nope, nope. No to both?
Nope.
Okay. All right, so we have? Okay, they will both receive it. Perfect. Okay. Now we go to policies, community support policy. Ms. Parker?
All right, so as mentioned two seconds ago, you're?
Oh, okay, I think I have. Yeah, let me try this. Okay, oh, Councilor Branch, you have a question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't see.
Just, no, I thought of it after. I know I'm not going to be changing my vote, just for point of clarity, is that shelter within the city of Bathurst?
Yes, I think it's in our city limits, yes.
Okay, yeah, but again, that's not changing my vote. I was just wondering. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Parker?
All right. As mentioned at a previous meeting and not too long ago, there has been a new policy that has been drafted to guide monetary requests. We have changed the name, we tweaked it a little bit, so it would be now known as the Community Support Policy. This would help introduce a clear and transparent process for distribution of municipal funds through grants, donations, and sponsorships. So the policy aligns each category with a summary, application process, eligibility criteria, and reporting requirements. A copy of the proposed bylaw was included in your meeting package as well as a handy little cheat sheet to kind of give you a summary of what it entails and the key points of it. We've also updated the application form so we're able to collect more information from the applicants. And this will help council make, you know, better informed decisions and keep it consistent. If you have any questions, now would be the time to ask because the intention is to bring it to resolution, put this in place as soon as possible so I am able to send this out to anybody who has applied within the past, you know, two, three years so they know the new process, they're able to get their things in on time. We have been having issues where people weren't submitting the documentation required and they were still going through. But with this policy, they will no longer be accepted. If I don't get the required documents, it will be rejected.
Do we have any questions, recommendations? Councilor Anderson?
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm just questioning like how you have it structured because grants and donations, one time a year goes to the Grants Committee and all sponsorship goes to council. It used to be the other way around. So if there was any like big monetary issue, request that people had or associations had, that would always come to council, they would do a presentation to council. But all the sponsorship stuff, we would have once or twice a year, Councilor Hondas, twice a year, and we get an envelope with all the sponsorship requests within, and then they would be filtered through and then recommendations made to council for council to approve the various sponsorships. So I'm just wondering why we're kind of doing it the other way now.
So the way that the current policy is mapped out, it doesn't specify really who's going over the applications. It just fell on the Grant Committee that they were going through the grants and anything that was done presentation-wise in September when we have the few applicants come in.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Those were going to the Grant Committee usually.
Because I'm, but they're going to be doing presentations to council?
Yeah, yeah, but that can be changed, yeah.
I just think it makes more sense to have all the sponsorships going through the Grants Committee itself and for these big requests that they have to do presentations to council, it kind of becomes redundant in a sense where they're going to present to council and then the Grants Committee have a meeting and then the Grants Committee, and then council still votes. Do you know what I mean? Like it just becomes a little bit redundant?
No, I, no, I completely understand where you're coming from. And if council wants the grant portion to come directly to council, we can change that. But you do, like, what about the donation portion? Because it is separated into three.
Well, I think the donate, the, I would think the donations and sponsorships could go together, but, but I think there should be a hard line drawn on it. Like if you don't have the submissions in, even if you want it, maybe do it three times a year. But I mean, every week we entertain requests for financial support and I just think a hard line has to be drawn in the sand. This is the date. If you haven't met the date, you're going to have to come, you're going to have to wait for the next round.
I agree. So, but I, do you believe, I believe that the donation, we should have three categories. Donation is one, sponsorship is another one. Let's use a Chamber of Commerce golf tournament, for example. That's like if we want to sponsor the golf tournament. So we keep it three categories and then they know every year that it's coming in. So, or the gala, their Chamber of Commerce gala.
Right.
So, yeah, okay. So you're, everybody is in, we keep three categories and?
And implement three specific dates where the Grant Committee recommendations would come to council.
Right. But I, I think that we, like, and I understand what you're saying, Amy, that they come to council because you get so many and otherwise we'd have to say no. I think we have to start saying no, quite honestly. Like if you don't abide by the dates that's there, you're going to have to wait.
And just so councils are aware, I did reach out to other municipalities to see how they were doing it. And the reason why I formatted it the way I did is because they actually take the request in as they come. And once the funds are depleted, they're depleted and they, that's when they do the hard stop.
Okay, okay. So they do what we're doing right now until the funds are depleted?
Yeah, because we're almost depleted and we're June 9th and we don't have much left in the bucket.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, so we're lit up just about everywhere. So Conseil LeBlanc?
Je veux être sûr que c'est ça que c'est. Mettons qu'on met une date, batch numéro un, c'est 31 mars. On va venir au conseil, mettons, le 15 avril avec ça. Et que ça soit assuré que quelqu'un qui arrive le 2 avril, que ça sera pas dans la batch du 15 avril. Ça va être dans trois mois plus tard ou quatre mois plus tard comme tu le fais. Parce que je suis d'accord avec ça, ça a pas de sens. Il y a pas une soirée, je pense depuis le début de l'année que nous trois, on a pas été obligés de se rencontrer. C'est comme sa prise de ridicule par bout. Ça fait que bien d'accord avec ça, qu'on sépare comme on veut, j'ai pas de problème avec ça. En autant que c'est clair. Puis les autres municipalités, ce qui est plate de ça, c'est que si on, quand on le fait comme on le fait là, à un moment donné, tu veux pas dire non à personne, si c'est à l'intérieur évidemment des nombres. Et puis après, il vient quelque chose qui est vraiment valide ou valable, puis t'es obligé de dire non. C'est qu'en faisant, moi je pense que comme ça aussi, on pourrait regarder peut-être à se mettre un budget, si c'est par corps. Fait que mettons que notre budget pour l'année pour les grants, c'est 100 000. Bon, on met 33 000 corps 1, 33 000 corps 2, 33 000 corps 3, peut-être quelque chose du genre. Parce que c'est pas mieux si on blote un premier trimestre non plus. Ça fait, je pense, peut-être bien une discussion à boire ou quelque chose que vous pouvez regarder. Amylin, c'est juste ça que vous voulez porter. Merci.
So you took that note? Okay. We'll keep going. Councilor Branch?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So last year, we set a deadline, you know, we set these deadlines, we said we were going to respect them and then we didn't. So now we're establishing deadlines again. I think this time, we should respect them, but I think we should leave a provision there if there's an emergency. So if some organization has something drastic happen to their infrastructure or something like that, we should just leave a mechanism where they would be able to come to council but barring some type of emergency, stick to our deadlines.
Okay. Councilor Burnett?
Uh, thanks, Madam Mayor. Yeah, that emergency thing, Israel, for example, over the museum, they had problems after the grants went out with a downstairs floor and there's a lot of tourists that go there because of the genealogy department and gathering. And they might need some help to try to help get those tiles back down so nobody drips on them. So that would be after timelines, which makes it a little more difficult. But the, the thing about the museum is that it's used an awful lot by tourists in the summertime. So could that come out of the tourism section? That might have to be looked at because the tourist bureau down in the waterfront does recommend people to go to the museum as a part of the sightseeing of Bathurst, you know. So it is a place that a lot of tourists do end up going to. But my question before that was, we are now taking care of a number of buildings. We've committed to so much a year for four or five buildings and those buildings wouldn't stay open unless we commit it to. How does that work into the donations? Like we have the old post office, we, we have the museum, we have, we have the aquatic center, we have different, different buildings that need help in order to stay open and we don't want them to close. So where would that fit in this policy?
Parker? Thank you. So those ones there, they were pre-approved for a set amount of years. So they're, I can't change that. So those will continue as they are. For anything future, they would come in, if it's a large amount, they would come in for the grant portion of it. So they would come in, they would submit everything before August, the end of August, they would come in, do a presentation in September, and then it would be budgeted beginning that year for the following year.
Okay, so the old post office will have to come back or we agreed already so much a year or?
So they're good for, I think, another three years? I have it written somewhere.
Okay.
I can't remember.
Yeah.
Anybody who's already approved are good until the end of their, their approval.
And we already said some for the Curling Club too?
Yeah, yes.
You know, so, yeah, okay.
Our tuition for our doctors is set.
Yeah.
The Curling Club, everything's already preset. Those are preset, they're going to stay, they're committed.
Okay.
And the other ones would be the newer ones.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, recommendation? So does council, when I'm listening, is instead of twice a year, maybe three times a year, every three, every four months? Or?
Three or quarterly.
Or quarterly? What, where would you like to? Because I think if we go quarterly, we're going too much again. It's too much. Three max? You would be okay with three? Now, Ms. Parker, is that a lot of work? But, or would you prefer, because you're the one that's, that does all the legwork at, at the front of it. So would you prefer twice? Like we, we do want a, your recommendation as well. Because you do the legwork, we don't.
Three times a years? I don't see an issue with it, but it needs to be kept that way.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I can't have requests coming in, oh my God, this is an exception, like let's push it through because then it, that's kind of what's happening now and it sets everything, you know, ask you.
And then during the grant, we'll have our, the funds that we already know that we pre-committed. And then as we do the budget this year, going into next year, we'll have the funds that, what we have available. So does council want to take those funds and we divide it between the three, like the three quarter? So let's say we have $75,000 left, we go 25, 25, 25? Or do we leave the 75 and if she's depleted within the first three months, she's gone? Depleted? If she's gone, she's gone? Okay. Snozzy lose, okay. Well, saves work for the following months. All right. Meanwhile, if council has any other ideas, suggestions, please let Ms. Parker know and then, because we're going to bring that next Monday for resolution? We're gonna try. If not, we'll bring it up the next public meeting. But if there's anything else, come back.
Good. I just want to confirm, sorry. Donation and sponsorship would go to the committee and the grants come straight to council? Is that what I'm understanding? Everybody's nodding, so.
Yeah, okay. All right, good. So before we end, Rib Fest this weekend. Not the mayor's report, but let's support local. We have a Rib Fest happening this weekend downtown at the parking by, behind the harbor view. Hopefully, we'll be able to see a lot of you there and have a And have a good evening. Meeting adjourned. Merci à tous.